All righty. Welcome to the Planted Board Meeting tonight, Tuesday, April 18th. Open the meeting at 7:00 PM. Motion to open the meeting.
No motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna have to do a roll call vote because one of the members are on Zoom. So I'll do it again. John, say aye.
Aye. John Stokes.
Jason. Aye.
Speak with your name.
Jason Aves.
Aye, Brad Legals. Wally?
Aye, Walt Sorensen.
Thank you. Okay. First up tonight is discussion, possible vote. Public hearing, the new hearing on 301 Main Street. Groveland Planted Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM at 183 Main Street Groveland to hear petition remanded by the court on March 15th, 2023 of Robert Williams, 188 Main Street Groveland, Mass., requesting a site plan review and a site permit per Chapter 48, Section 6 of the Mass. Zoning Act of Chapter 50, Section 13.1 Site Plan Review, and Section 9.1 Parking Requirements of the Groveland zoning bylaws. The court has ordered the board to reconsider the application, make appropriate findings, react of the decision regarding the site plan review, special permit determination dated August 17th, 2021, for the redevelopment of the premises as a small retail shop showroom, as well as a reduction in parking for the business. The property is now located at 301 Main Street, SS Map 10, Lot 001. It is within the business zoning district. The property is shown on, is owned by Zhong Yang, 10 Blue J Road of Linfield, Mass., 01940. The supporting materials are on file at the Economic Development Planning Conservation Department at the Town Hall. It may be viewed during the hours of Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, by contacting Annie Schindler at 978-556-7214, or annieschindler@grovelandmass.com. Please print on April 3rd, 2023, and Monday, April 10th, 2023. So, on that court decision, we're gonna bring in the town attorney, Lisa Mead.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. Just as an overview, the reason why you're here this evening is that, as you know, the applicant in that case appealed your denial of the special permit to reduce the parking spaces. The court heard a motion for summary judgment, both by your attorney as well as the applicant's attorney, and issued an order regarding that. And the judge remanded the matter back to the board for two considerations. One, there was a claim by the applicant that the board was arbitrary and capricious because the board had previously approved a special permit for a restaurant not two years prior to when they denied the special permit. And the second was that the administrative record did not, or contained sparse facts to support the determination that the use, that there was a safety issue regarding the use. And so the court asked the board to clarify in the record what differentiates the prior approval of the special permit for a restaurant with the current application, first thing, and the second thing, to make specific findings with regard to the criteria that's set forth in both the bylaw and Chapter 48, Section 9, which we can review if the board wants. But typically on a remand, what you would do is have the applicant make a presentation again, and then the board would have a discussion, ask questions. You would take a public comment like you typically would, and then the board would have a discussion about your findings and the criteria. I would remind the board that your criteria is found in the bylaw in Section 50, hang on one second.
50.1.
50 dash 9.4, and that is your special permits for reduced parking. And when we get to that, when we get to that section of the meeting, I'm happy to review that and outline it for you as well. And then, Chapter 48, Section 9, requires the board to issue special permits for uses in the bylaw where they're subject to your general or specific provisions, the ordinance, and the general provisions with regard to health, safety, and welfare, if you look at the purpose of your ordinance. But with that, I think, Chair, you could take the applicant's presentation, and then the board can ask questions. You can listen to public comment.
All right. Do you wanna come up and make your presentation, Bob? We'll open it up for you.
My name is Bob Williams. I'm the applicant here. We're asking that we are looking for a special permit to revitalize the old gas station at 301 Main Street. We will use it as our business office. We're in and out, maybe twice a day, early in the morning, late in the afternoon, generally non-traffic peak hours, which seem to be about 11 o'clock in the morning to the traffic studies that we've seen. And because of the area involved that we would be using, we were asking for a reduction in the parking requirement because the parking lot is so tight down there, number one, and number two, we're not going to be there most of the time. So you have seen a set of plans that we presented, which basically would update the building on the interior. We would increase the size of what we have labeled as a showroom, more as conference room and meeting room for client meetings, to review project selections and so forth. And then we would add handicapped accessibility through a new egress door in and out of the building, update safety lighting, of course, and revitalize the bathroom to a handicapped-accessible bathroom. The area outside of the office and conference area would be used for general storage of equipment. And we're talking things like buckets of nails, drywall, screws, ductwork, pieces that we have left over from jobs. It may be some lumber. We have another location that we do use for most of that stuff. We really don't want the sawdust to be close to the computers. They really don't work well together. But the general idea is to update the building, get it cleaned up, clean up the property around it, and be able to have a place to do more of our clerical duties than anything else.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Sir, you submitted a document on April 28th, 2021, so we are reusing all the documents that you said because you advised the town that you wanted to do that. So is everything that you set forth in that document still accurate? So for example, the hours of operation for office hours are 8:00 to 5:00 to the public. Your operation to perform in the field and customers then reduce the need for access. Generally, access is limited to early morning, late afternoon, Monday to Friday, 6:00 to 8:00, 4:00 to 6:00, for employees to pick up or drop off, one or two company vehicles and restock before heading to job site, vehicles at the end of the day to offload needed tool and equipment storage, et cetera. So is that, is this whole letter still accurate?
Yes, it is. And please note that it is by appointment with clients, and I believe that is in the document. Even though we are, our business hours are basically 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, that's more for our staff than for the general public, but we would be able to take general public in between those hours. But we do by appointment. Most of our work is off-site, and many times those meetings actually take place in the client's premises.
It does say that. It does say that.
Thank you.
Any public comment at this time? Nobody public?
Probably.
Okay. Need your name and address?
Hi, Don Grinney, 2 Mill Street Extension. So basically, the problem I see with that property is that they don't have access to it. I don't know if that's an issue for you people at this meeting. I know I've mentioned it at another, I believe it was a zoning meeting, but earlier this month, I contacted Mass. DOT, I spoke to the gentleman from District 4, and he said that due to the taking that was done, when the bridge was done, they basically lost access to the property. I don't know if he's just wasting his time by having it carry on. I don't like to see people lose money or time, but I just don't know, you know, how you can grant something to a property they can't use, you know? So, and I'm more afraid that it's gonna affect the post office access. If somebody finally determines that it's not accessible, then there's gonna be no access to the post office at all.
I think that's why we're here tonight. We have any, anybody else, public comment? All right. Members of the board?
Excuse me. This is Brian Cannell. I'm a direct abutter. I run Norwood Insurance Agency, Groveland Square LLC is the owner of that property. I did send in a letter, I'm in and out of meetings right now, but I did send a letter that I was hoping someone could read in. It was sent to the town planner.
I can read it if you'd like me to.
All right. We have a letter from Brian Cannell. Dear Town of Groveland Planted Board, I am writing regarding the most recent proposed project at 301 Main Street. Unfortunately, I cannot be in attendance. I'd like to provide my feedback at the public hearing. On behalf of Groveland Square LLC, owner of 291, 293 Main Street Norwood Insurance, occupant of 293 Main Street, we are in opposition to the project that allows of any former Getty Gas Station at 301 Main Street to be occupied, as she has the same ingress/egress of 299 Main Street, which is occupied by the United States Post Office, which it's at best very limited access, and it's the worst dangerous driveway. As I have mentioned in past proposals, the site has been taken by the Commonwealth of Mass. for 618,000 of taxpayer money to decommission the building. It's entirely in appraise the value of land taken as follows. After the taking, the only one allowed to access either one of these properties, either gas station or the post office, will be the postal workers eventually. At the termination of the postal use, the access for these parcels will totally be restricted, thereby making the remainder of the land the equivalent of a landlocked parcel. I know, in practice, this was never enforced, as customers continue to use the ingress/ingress of the, to enter the post office, but the intent of the state's view was to access, it's clear that it would not be used by those customers, and much less other businesses, entities, and reconstitute the property of the gas station, which is why our state taxpayers, money paid, prior owner, due to rendering of the property, landlocks severely limits the parcel. Also, it is deemed either a special permit, I would cite that the Groveland zoning bylaw, Section 14.6.1B, special permit criteria. Special permits shall be granted, that the adverse effect in the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or the neighborhood. That the determination shall include the consideration of each of the following: traffic flow and safety, including traffic and loading. With all due respect to the business applying, I do not see the business benefits outweighing the potential traffic flow, safety, and parking that are already stressed property, dangerous intersection, and the square has already been extremely limited to the parking today and many vacancies. This will only get worse as some of these businesses return to Elm Square. As such, we are opposed to, in the direct abutter of the property. Lastly, here's sample some quotes from the local Groveland Facebook page. So would you like me to read the quotes, or?
I can, if you'd like me to. Would you want me to take over?
Sure.
All right. I'm just gonna take over, reading the Facebook page comments. The first one states, "Parking has always been an issue and getting back on the street even worse. I go to Georgetown, W. Newbury, and I love Plazdow," from DB. The next one states, "I don't use that PO unless half, unless half to." So many others nearby with normal parking, from JP. The next one states, "We use West Newbury. That parking is treacherous," from JS. The next one states, "I do not use it often, but when I have been parking across, when I have been parking across the street, the parking lot is a hazard," from LM. The next one states, "Also, I don't think I have ever seen the grass," in parentheses, "weeds mowed. It gets so tall and there isn't much to tend to. Not that it has to be the best-looking building on the street, but mildly respectable would do," from SM. The next one states, "I no longer go there. Too dangerous to get out, to get in and out. John used to mow the grass. No one noticed until he was no longer there," from LL. The next one states, "There's going to be a huge accident there at some point," from LJ. The next one states, "They really should just close that branch," from SS. The next one states, "General upkeep of property is disgraceful and absolutely ridiculous. Whether or not someone uses our post office or not, it's an eyesore," from KA. The following reads, and the last reads, "The parking lot is a disgrace and none of the spots are marked. Take a look at Byfield for a great example of nice rural post office well-maintained. Groveland is a perfect example of a building and parking lot that should have been condemned," from SG. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to just finish out the letter?
Sure.
"This sampling of comments above are with only the post office. I think it would only get worse adding any additional business, even with minimal foot or vehicle traffic to the site. Thank you for your time and sorry we cannot attend in person. Should you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Brian Cannell."
Anything else to add, Brian?
No, no, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
With all due respect, I think Mr. Cannell has ulterior motives. If the parking lot turns around and has access through his property, and he is forcing the present owner to eliminate use of that property, the only one it gains is him at everybody else's expense. It's real easy to cherry pick things from Facebook. I could have done the same thing and brought in the 87 people that responded that thought it was a positive idea to do this. We're not here about that. What we're here about is to get approval for a special permit to utilize the property according to the zoning bylaws and using your groundwork that contains the property. The question of access belongs to the DOT, and I don't want to see us get into a situation where we're overstepping our boundaries and getting into jurisdictions that don't apply. If you approve this, we still have to go to the DOT, and the DOT has final say on whether we can access that in and out of there. As far as the safety of that lot, when I checked with the police department, there have been about seven accidents over the last three years that have been reported and involved the post office. One was a fight in the parking lot, a couple of gentlemen. A couple were people going into exchange papers after they've had an accident on the street at the lights. And a couple of others were people that rear-ended each other on the lights. The one that involved the post office directly was a bicyclist that was coming around off the bridge, had his head down, and ran into a car that was entering the parking lot and flew across their hood. That's over the last three years. It's all public record. So as far as the safety goes, and the parking lot or the egress and exiting of the parking lot have never been involved in any of those accidents. So if we're looking at the safety factor, and I understand that if there were a safety factor, I would adamantly say that, you know, there needs to be corrections in order to do anything there. As it stands right now, if two more vehicles came in daily to the post office and left the post office, nobody would even know what the count was. SPS and the state use that parking lot and that gas station area, the old gas station area, as a staging area to access the bridge, to open it and close it, and everybody turns a blind eye to that. So all I'm asking is for an opportunity to clean up what right now is justifiably an eyesore, make it a better, cleaner environment, and take a building that has got some vital life left in it and put it to good use. So I'm not asking for anything that isn't within the range of the board to approve so that we can go to DOT, and I'll stand by what the DOT has to say.
Thank you. Mike, did you have your hand up? No. All right.
This is Brian Cannell. I'd like to just rebut that, please. You know, we have literally a bird's eye view constantly of that area. And just also, just putting on my insurance hat, not every accident there gets reported to Groveland Police, nor does it need to. As far as the logistics of the parking lot, we do still see people from time to time come into our lot and block our lot, block access, park on our property, which creates liability issues. We just went through three years and quite a bit of, you know, heartache and expense with the current owner of the parcel, who was trying to take over our property and our property rights, which we protected and successfully so. I understand that, you know, this gentleman wants to use the property, but that property was bought and paid for, gosh, 10-plus years ago, to the prior owner. So we're still standing in opposition. We're not cherry picking. Those are actual quotes from actual people, and the list went on and on and on. I just, for the period of brevity, didn't, didn't wanna enter every comment in, but that was the spirit of actually one Facebook post, which was actually a resident complaining to the U.S. Postal Service. So again, I do see it. I recognize that it's not a great situation, but I think adding any sort of business back into that is only gonna make matters worse. And I'll just leave with that. Thank you.
Thank you. No more public comment? If that's the case, we're gonna shut down the public comment at this time. All right, board members? Any comment from?
Yeah, I'd like to touch base briefly on the safety. In terms of what Bob said and what the police have said, I don't see a significant safety risk to the public for having additional business in there, especially given the plans with the proper access being added to the lot. If the additional traffic that that business would generate would create more of a safety hazard, come Christmas time when the post office is at its busiest, we would see a large increase in accidents in that area. And as far as downtown, you wanna have a lot of activity, one, to help slow everybody down and keep everybody in the downtown area, so it promotes business and helps drive businesses into the town. So in terms of that aspect, I'd like to see something that would have an impact on that.
Do we have a traffic study? Updated traffic study for this site?
I do not have an updated traffic study. We have not had need for a traffic study because the DOT has jurisdiction over the traffic. If we go to DOT and they require it, certainly provide another traffic study.
Mass. Green Book would play in this. Mass. Green Book would wanna, in the mass regs, traffic study on that road. The other, John, do you have anything to add?
I have the original traffic study that we submitted with this before.
We probably need an updated one.
Well, then I would ask that as a condition of the approval process.
Yeah, I'm gonna set the traffic, set the traffic safety issue aside for a second. I'm a little stuck on how we make a decision and approve use of a property that doesn't seem to not have access at all. And so what's, what is our jurisdiction there? Like, I don't understand. If we had someone else come in, this is a complicated site.
Correct.
And so generally, how do we handle that when somebody wants to use a site for something but doesn't have access to it?
Most of our sites are accessible. They have to come in here, you know? Access is one of the primary sources of planning. So because of the decision of the court, I don't think we can act in the interest of access, but we have to act on safety and health. So the question is, you know, there's a loading dock that's in use for the post office already. There's a limited space in that parking area. There's gonna be loading of lumber, materials, board, wood, Jackson lumber, or whatever, any other vehicle coming in, box trucks, fork trucks. You know, we have a parking reg that I believe with this parcel is gonna be 19 spaces required. So I don't think we need to look at the access part of this. I think it's already been constructed in the court.
I can address, it's a layered issue. So this board's approval or disapproval is just one aspect of it. That doesn't mean that he would have access to the site because he still needs to get DOT approval. So it would be like if you were getting a subdivision approval, but it also was subject to Conservation Commission approval, right? You might get the subdivision approved, but the Conservation Commission might not ever let you build the road, right? So it's the same thing. It's a layered permit.
The other thing I will remind you is you set a precedent when you approved to get the use of that building before for a restaurant, that you approved access for a restaurant with more deliveries, more traffic.
The time's.
Well, if I, if I could just, they didn't approve access. The board does not approve access in this instance.
They refuse special permit.
That's correct, but you said access. So they don't approve access. This is a DOT approval.
And the hours.
And the special permit before the board today is a reduction in parking. It's not a use, it is a reduction in parking. That's the special permit, which has two sets of criteria. One, that is in Section 50 dash 14.6, which is your general special permit criteria, and the other criteria is in Section 50 dash 9.4. And that's the criteria that is supposed to be applied. So if you look at 50.9.4, the, the finding is whether or not the reduction is inconsistent with public health and safety, or that the reduction promotes a public benefit. And then there are examples under that of how that might be accomplished. And you can see those, the use of the common parking lot for separate uses, having peak demands occurring at different times, age or other characteristics of the occupants using the facility that reduces the use, peculiarities of the use which make usual measures of demand invalid, availability of on-street parking or parking at nearby municipally-owned facilities. So those are some examples of how it might be appropriate. But then, in addition, you need to look at 50 dash 14.6, your general special permit criteria, which discusses whether or not the application addresses social, economic, and community needs served by the proposal, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, adequacy of utilities, neighborhood character and social structure, impacts on the natural environment, potential impact, fiscal impact, and consistency with the Groveland Community Development Plan. So the board, in order to approve a special permit, you would need to make positive findings for each of those criteria. If any one of the criteria does not receive a positive finding, then it would be a reason for denial. So the discussion that you're having right now is appropriate because you have to make those findings, the conflict or not conflict with the dock, the loading dock, and what's happening? What time are people coming and not coming to the site versus other uses on the same parking lot? How does that compare with what was proposed? How does that compare with what was proposed in the restaurant proposal, which you did approve?
Correct. Thank you. Does that help?
It clarifies, keeps you on point.
So the question is, you know, again, the restaurant had different peak, you know, different hours, not, I don't have that in front of me. I think it was times of 3:00 to 10:00, Tuesday through Thursday. I'm going by memory. So the restaurant hours were from Tuesday to Thursday, 3:00 to 10:00, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Sunday noon to 10:00 P.M. During the operational hours, except for hours that overlap with the post office, restaurant employees were going to park in the onsite parking spaces to limit vehicle circulation on the site. First shift employees for the restaurant, Monday through Friday, would walk through the municipal lot on School Street, over where the water department is. So it was, it's not, it's not the exact same use.
And I understand that. And I'm saying I have maximum two vehicles for employees that would be utilizing access to the property before the office hours would be open, and generally after the office hours are closed. That's when we're coming, we're out to the site to be onsite at 8:00 with my employees. If I have an administrative assistant, that may be a vehicle that goes in there and myself, and it's more of a clerical area. As far as loading docks, we have space that is under the canopy and out of what is noted as the parking that is designated on parking plans that have been submitted to offload and unload anything that we might need. The restaurant surely would have had deliveries of food and stuff on a regular basis that would have needed to come in when the vendors showed up. So I don't have most of my material delivered to the warehouse. It goes to the job site. And I have a warehouse where most building material goes to. We're looking at a clerical situation here, a place to turn around and host clients to look at plans, like you have in front of you, make sure they approve them, pick out selections for whether it be tile or flooring or paint colors, or whether they want a new window. So the type of use that we were talking about is minimal. I don't spend every day in the office. There's a good time of my life that I spend on the job site. But when I need to have a place to bring somebody in and go over this type of stuff, I'm looking for an office that's an inviting environment, and if I can clean up a downtown area, make that what I call a landmark because it is a location that people will recognize. And if you give them a description to meet you at the old gas station at the bridge in Groveland, they'll find it. So.
Again, I'm just adhering to the special permit. So.
So no delivery vehicles other than your own vehicles, is what you're saying?
Right.
But there is a warehouse space, as specified at the beginning of the meeting. You know, there's going to be sheet rock, there's going to be, there's going to be lumber, it's going to be nails. It's a big portion of that old gas station is a warehouse.
No. The major part of that old gas station, if you look at the plans, is designated to office area and conference room.
But there is a loading dock on the other side that will interfere with parking.
There is, the loading dock and the only access is through those garage doors out the front. There is no other.
I'm looking, we're looking at the site as a 19,000-square-foot parcel with two buildings, right? So on that site, there's a post office that's part of the site. They have a loading dock, they have parking. Our criteria is 19 spaces for that site. So there would be conceivably interference and health and safety concerns for that site in the site. So as a board, we're just trying to run down the special permit part of this.
And I can understand that concern, Brad. Quite honestly, I would think that you would have to look at historical documentation to see whether there actually is an impact by that loading dock and what the impact is.
Okay. So looking, as Lisa said, as a layer, if we go back into the site, this is the criteria that we have.
Yep.
Any more questions with that one, John? Jason?
I don't have any questions. I mean, I'm inclined to agree that he's not going to interfere with the loading area for the post office, just because, like he says, here in the front of the areas where any of his delivery trucks is going to be going, they're not going towards that loading area. And I believe there is no storage of any materials outside the building. And like he had stated in the plans, most of the building is going to be for office, conference room. So there's not going to be a tremendous amount of storage of tools and equipment and materials there, just a little bit of runoff. And I don't, and because one of the stipulations is number of people and access to it, the type of business it is, the number of employees that they have, the potential customers going in there is going to be so minimal that I think that would allow us to move to waive the 19 parking spaces, in my view. And then, in terms of a benefit for the community, I go back to what I stated in terms of refreshing downtown, bringing more business to it, making it more inviting. And I think that's a big improvement to the community and for the, for the needs of the community, because the more that building stays vacant, the more overgrown it gets and the more broken windows that have to be replaced on it, a lot of that wouldn't happen if it was occupied.
Can you just restate your peak hours that you expect?
The difference between my peak hours and my office hours are substantially different. We're a construction company, residential remodeling company. Most of our work hours are from 8:00 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon, Monday through Friday. Most of that work is done off-site.
At the site, the site peak hours.
Yeah, it would be at the home. What I'm talking about is going in to use my computer to run your estimate, turn around, get on the phone, make phone calls to my insurance agent, my marketing people, my vendors and so forth to secure pricing, do meetings with architects or designers about product lines that they may carry and offer that we may benefit from, and to do client meetings to show them the stuff that we can do for them.
Right.
Those are generally at the convenience of the homeowner. Most of those.
Your vans coming in and out would be the peak, I would think. And that's, you're saying before 8:00 A.M.
Before 8:00 A.M.
And then in the afternoon is what?
Generally after 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, by the time they do travel.
Okay. I'm just looking at the first criteria on the page. Parking lot for separate uses, having peak demands occurring at different times. I'm assuming those peak times are different than the peak times for the post office. Do we know what the peak time for the post office is?
I believe that's before and after the post office is even open.
It's not before 8:00 A.M., right?
Right.
Is it possible to ask a question?
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
If you guys change, if you change the required parking spaces for commercial or, you know, those types of buildings, right? I understand that there's so many parking spaces per square foot of building. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if you change that now, you're setting a precedence, and anybody else in town that has a property that's not going to work, if you do that, you're going to have so many businesses with no place to park in the square, like you already do.
Thank you. I just can't get by, Jason, that you've got a 47-foot-long bay here by, oh, 21... by about a, you've got a 30-by-50 warehouse that's not going to be used. The meat and potatoes of this building is the right side, a showroom and office, but you're not going to use the warehouse.
That's not what I said. I'm saying.
And again, the interest of health and safety.
And I'm trying to be clear with you. This is for stocking and restocking trucks. If I buy a case of nails, I don't need the whole case on the truck because it has a trip hazard for my guys and they don't need all of them, they lose them. So we take the 50-pound box, 35-pound keg, we load up smaller bins, and we put them in the trucks and stock them. If we have tools that are seldom-used tools, we may be storing those tools just to keep them out of the way so we have a place to keep them undercover and protect them at the cost of the tool. It's more cost-efficient to protect it and just put it away than it is to leave it out in the weather or bounce it around in a vehicle or jump it from job to job. Those would be the types of things that we would store there. I do not want to do work of any kind of woodworking or anything else because the computers just can't take that kind of environment with the dust and so forth.
But it does say workshop space.
And if I have a tool to repair, like a screw gun that needs a new trigger or needs a new cord, if it's something that I have there and I can do it there, I've listed it as a workshop area in order to be able to do those types of things.
I get what you're saying, Jason, but I just can't get past loading, post office, additional parking, throw a couple trucks in there.
In terms of the loading, I mean, this is where you're talking about parking them. And so, and most of the loading and unloading is going to happen in here or in front of the building, not on the side where the loading is for the post office.
You're not, you're not parking on the street to load.
No, it's right in front, underneath the overhang for the, where the gas pumps used to be.
So you still have to get into the site.
Yes.
With additional parking for the post office. You see what I'm saying, John?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Wally.
Yeah, just keep in mind, we wrote the special permit regulations, and we did quite a bit of work on this because of some of the issues that I believe, that might have been Mr. Granier pointed out, of the downtown area where we have businesses and limited parking going forth. And we wrote that for a minimum amount of spaces required in any business. And to be fair, we should uphold that regulation. And I've always said if it met the regulation, the application flies. In this case, it's, doesn't come close. We also have other consideration here, although not in what we're dealing with today, per se, but we do have, we do have a structure that was supposed to be demolished, that taxpayers paid for. And I know that's not a big, it's not a concern right now for the planning board, but we do have to kind of keep that in mind. Otherwise, if that had been performed and whoever dropped the ball on that, we wouldn't be having this application be forced. But that said, the post office is a very active area. We've all walked it, we've reviewed it. Somehow, a bridge ended up where it wasn't supposed to be for guardrails, and it is always a traffic area. And this, if, we must adhere to the regulation as it was written on this site and every site. And then if the DOT does its further approval, let that be on them. But we must uphold our regulations, else we don't have any. And I feel that we must, we must enforce the 19 parking positions regardless of the peak time or non-peak time. I don't think that makes a bearing in this case because it's unpredictable. So the regulation, I feel, should fly.
Any more comment from the board?
My only concern with that is, is do we uphold that when we approve the restaurant? That required a lot more parking, and they encompassed the parking outside of the lot itself. We must have given them a waiver for that, for when we approved the restaurant.
Well, I think the last criteria on this page is availability of on-street parking or parking at nearby municipal-owned facilities.
Correct.
Which is what we, which, what was what we used to approve the restaurant. And so I would think that would apply here as well.
Do you have something to add, Lisa?
Well, I wanted to make sure that you address the discrepancy, if there is any, between the two. That was one of the court's very clear orders that you needed to, if you were going to deny this, then you needed to differentiate the decision about the restaurant versus this decision, or as the case may be.
The hours were, the hours were different, completely different.
Some of them overlapped with the.
And I think the delivery and, I don't know if it was written down, was supposed to be like a 5:00 or 6:00 A.M. delivery that wouldn't interfere with Route 113, traffic with the post office.
But I don't think that's different than, his deliveries are before 8, before post office hours, right? It's before 8:00 A.M. The afternoon one, I don't, I mean, that's four.
Five, four, five o'clock in the afternoon.
Five o'clock.
And the post office doesn't adhere to that now when they have their box trucks man and give out. I don't know that really affects.
So again, they have a loading dock.
I don't think that really would affect traffic in any greater extent than just normal traffic.
Just remember, because this is a special permit, it's going to have to be, this is a unanimous vote?
An affirmative vote of four members. So it would have to be a unanimous vote of the four members that are here tonight because we only have four members. Also, I pulled up the post office hours. If they're Tuesday through, or sorry, Monday through Friday is 8:30 A.M. to 1:00 P.M. They take a one-hour lunch break, and then they're open from 2:00 P.M. to 5:00 P.M. And then on Saturday, they're open from 8:30 A.M. to noon. And then, obviously, it's post office, it's closed on Sundays.
One more question. Do they have the required spaces for parking on this site? For the square footage of buildings they have?
They don't have 19 parking spaces.
So if I could just clarify that, so the board has a provision, the town has a provision to allow a special permit to reduce parking. So that's, that's what they're discussing, and there are specific criteria in order to allow it, which is what they applied before and which is what is being asked for now.
So we have, in order to approve it, we have to show that that reduction is not inconsistent with public health and safety, or that the reduction promotes a public benefit.
Correct. And what's the public benefit to waive it?
You can continue to have a deteriorating downtown that drives economic development away from Groveland, or you can clean it up, spruce it up, and make it a viable, productive building that may encourage more business and growth downtown.
I think that's pretty big.
But I think that's the benefit of revitalizing the building, not of the reduced parking.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, can I just note that Brian Cannell in the Zoom messages said, "I'm not sure if anyone has brought up the benefit of the town to have a new restaurant, but what is the benefit to the town to have a single office for a builder that office could go anywhere?" Just so that the board is aware that that comment was made in the Zoom.
Wally, anything to add?
Yeah, the, we have a different application be forced with a different use, per se, with this. I still want to stick with the, with the minimum parking requirement. We don't have an updated traffic study. I believe the other one may have been, what, two or three years old? And we don't have anything that. Yeah, so, okay, so 19, four years ago. Site distance, of course, and other things that come into play with the traffic study. I mean, it is really hard getting in and out of there because that traffic light is there, which has a long line of traffic during peak hours. And we have two major state highways coming together, 113 and 97, right at the corner of where this project is. So I would still, myself, you know, vote to keep the regulation intact. And the downtown revitalization, there's, we've been planning this for years on certain things. And one of the, one of the projects was that, that gas station, once it was to be removed, that the town was going to use it for additional parking. It was an old plan, but for that very reason, there isn't enough parking now in the downtown area for anything that comes back. And we've seen businesses due to COVID come and go. So the parking is necessary, and that's why we put this into this regulation that's been revised a few times, just so we're not scrambling for parking offsite and taking up other areas.
Thanks, Wally.
So for the sake of argument, if you... So for the sake of argument, if you, part of this is saying we want fewer cars going in and out of there, right? So if you had fewer parking spots in there, wouldn't that promote less traffic in and out of that lot?
But there's a, in our regs, there's a formula that we need 19 parking spaces.
Unless we find reason to reduce it.
Correct.
Well, none, it wouldn't necessarily be reduced because if you're the, a first-time person going in or make a wrong turn, you still have traffic going in and out. And what if the spaces are full? So you're still generating traffic.
But access doesn't apply.
Going into that.
We can't look at this as access.
No, but he's, I think what he's saying is could a reduced number of spots then make it worse because you're going to have someone go in, not have a spot, have to go back out? So the reduced would actually make it worse.
Right.
Wouldn't the issue of health and safety again? That's why we have the regs and there's two buildings on one parcel.
Would I be allowed to answer the question?
Go ahead.
Kathy Cadwick on Melissa Drive. There were rumors years ago that the post office was going to be moved. And as more development comes into town, it gets, it's congested, Christmas time notwithstanding, but it is difficult because of the, the traffic route to get in and out of there. It's, it's almost like you're taking your life in your own hands to just act, you know, to, to, to leave the post office. So my question is, is the post office there permanently? And this almost doesn't, I'm sorry, doesn't have anything to do with anything.
I think every town has to have a post office, within that.
No, but wouldn't, wasn't it proposed to be moved within the town? Like over, by the water department, it would be perfect.
There's a property across the street from the cemetery. There was a building that was there that, just some.
Thank you.
That a town resident bought the property there, had the building removed, and he was planning to put up, I want to say about a 30,000 square foot commercial building, of which the hope was the post office was going to move there. But currently, he never built the building because he didn't meet the minimum requirement for parking. So that never took place. Most of, if you ever get a package that doesn't get delivered to your house and you get left a card, you have to go to Georgetown to get it. You know? So the intent maybe was to make it go away, but like he, someone just mentioned, it seems like every town has a post office. You know, anywhere you go, it seems like they're there, but I don't know if it's a requirement.
He hasn't been clear about that. You should make him be clear about it. That'd be helpful, I think.
Nothing happened to the gas station, but in fact, they're by itself doing nothing. Although the ideal to remove it and have more access for parking for the post office during business hours of the post office. My, my question is, isn't it, will it ever be proposed to move the post office within Groveland itself as I, as I am hoping?
Those are questions that we can't answer.
That's whoever signs the lease for the post office.
The post office has a lease.
Correct. And again, tearing down buildings, I'm not the landowner. I mean, we're here to.
No, not even to tear down the building or the post office itself, but just to move it, like the water department.
The U.S. government.
That's a good question. All right, so I tend to agree with Wally of the 19 spaces that we need for the safety part of it, especially on this lot. So I think if we take a vote, and we're not all on the same page, what's going to happen?
Well, it would fail. The special permit would be denied. So I, I wonder if, so we don't have to have this back to the court until May 14th. That's our 60 days, right?
Our 60 days would be Sunday, May, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm getting it right.
Yeah, it's May 14th, right? So 13th, 12th. So, you know, I wonder if we, if I would draft up some of the things that I've heard all of you say as your findings and then put the criteria in a form of a decision. And then you get that in advance of your next meeting to think about that. And then at your next meeting on May 2nd, you actually go through each of those items. If you don't have a unanimous, if you don't have four people voting, then the special permit is denied. And that's, it is what it is, but you have to make findings and you have to address the question of the court. So somehow you're going to have to do that. We'll put it in paper and then we'll, and if it's a denial, it should address those issues. Or if it's a denial, because it's a split vote, then the court will have to deal with it.
I think that's the way I'd want to move. And by then we'll have a five-member vote and maybe somebody can chime in on the mullin.
Do you have, do you have five actual members?
Yes.
So the person who's not here would be able to mullins in?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep, we have another alternate and then.
Chris isn't here.
But you have a board of five.
A board of, full board, right.
Full board of five with an alternate.
So one person would have to mullins in and then you would have five to consider it. Yep, you could do that.
So I think, continue, probably the best, so motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue?
So motion.
Well, we'd have to make a motion, continue.
May 2nd.
May 2nd.
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM.
So motion.
Call in favor?
Roll call.
Aye, okay.
You had to do a roll call.
We got to do a roll call.
John Stokes, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Jason Aves, aye.
Walt Sarnson, aye.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll get that out to you before the next meeting so that you can look at it with everything that we've said now that we have confirmation that the applicant wants to use their material that's already in.
That works for you guys?
That works.
Okay.
Bob, can I ask you a question? How many employees do you actually have?
I have six-page employees on payroll. And I outsource multiple different functions such as marketing, HR, those type of resources.
What about subs?
Subcontractors, multiple subcontractors. Brad's no different than any other construction company. I don't hold an electrical license and I don't hold a plumber's license. I have to sub those types of work out. It's impractical for me to turn around and take on things like painting, house with my crews. My crews have made wood together, not to turn around and paint it, not to make it look pretty in some cases, except maybe get the course on the siding correct or the window level. So we're carpenters.
And you will have all six employees' cars at that lot and then pick up the other cars? How's that work?
No, we have a warehouse base in Haverhill on Hale Street with a.
You need to use the microphone.
We have, we have a warehouse base in, in Haverhill on Hale Street. We park our two work trucks there generally. Most of our equipment is there and so forth, but bringing the library of books and trade references, computer equipment and so forth, is the reason to keep them isolated and bring them here. My employees show up to the warehouse for the most part to stock the trucks and so forth. But if we've got specialty items, like I've got three vanities waiting for jobs to start, I'd rather not have them carrying lumber and large sheet goods around those. I'd rather have someplace like the gas station that I can put those things aside so they're protected for the customer. They get there and we know that when we start the job, we can keep on moving. But for the most part, my, my employees are reporting to the job site. We have two that would pick up the trucks and leave their car.
Not to shut this down, but we're going to continue this.
Yeah, right, you've already continued the hearing, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
We've continued the hearing so we can talk about this.
Yep, no.
Next time.
Just answering questions.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
So I think I'm going to jump on this to the A and R. 52 Seven Star Road, continue A and R, Form A Lot. Well, how'd it clear, thanks, Jason?
My name is William Holt. Did the plan for the owner, Jason and Roxanna Paradise, the owners of 52 Seven Star Road. We were here previously and we had a couple revisions to make, some minor revisions on the plan. So I'm creating two lots, both with an excess of 30,000 square feet. Actually, one's 35,978 and the other's 35,356 with the remaining, the existing house on the remaining lot of 30,225. Each of the lots has the 30,000 square feet of CBA, in excess of 30,000 square feet of CBA, and 24,000 is required. We have the circles, setbacks, proposed septics, proposed houses shown, and the proposed driveways. We did not have the driveway on this lot, 58A, which is 54 Seven Star Road. So I'm showing a proposed driveway off Wood Street and an alternate driveway off of Seven Star. It'd be the option of the buyer as to which direction they decide to put the driveway on. There is a proposed driveway shown on Lot 58B. And I think that was primarily the only change. Oh, another one. I'm sorry, there was a shed on 58B off of Wood Street. And we, that was a less than a 30-feet setback to the, to Wood Street. It's like 28 and some change. So the applicant removed that shed after the last meeting and tore it down and removed it. So the shed's no longer there. I put a note that shed was removed on 4723. So the non-conforming setback is no longer existence. So those are the two changes we made, which I think were requested by the commission or the board. And I think if you have any other questions, I can answer them, but.
So shed was removed, demoed, gone?
Gone.
Okay. These driveways are in. Wally, did you get a chance to see this?
Yeah, no, I did not get to see that particular lot. I'm aware of what needed to happen.
So driveways are in, shed was demoed.
Yeah.
So, any comment? He did what they, what we asked him to do.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was it on the list.
That's it.
You know, we obviously had a concern about some other stuff, but it complied with the reg.
Correct. So this does comply with the reg, Jason, John?
Yeah, it's fully compliant, yeah.
So in that case, I'll, motion to approve the A and R?
Second.
How about somebody fly a motion?
So motion.
So motion, I'll fly it. Motion to a fly, motion to approve the 52 Seven Star Road, A and R, Form A Lot. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call, sorry.
Aye.
Roll call, all in favor?
John Stokes, aye.
Brad Legos, aye.
Jason Aves, aye.
Walt Sarnson, aye. Thank you for your time, guys.
So just need three signatures up here. And then I'll get the, you got the Form A1, so you just sign it.
Just think, everything you missed us tonight.
And then this is just for the, we also have to, or any of us have to sign the A and R. You need your lunch. You need your lunch. Brad, just please, get all these out of your way because it's going to be loud. I'm just, I'm going to bring these, um, he's in the lobby. Right.
Run, Annie, run.
He's calling me off, I, speaking to my husband.
I didn't want to hold Bill here all night long.
I need to get this timestamp to buy the town.
That's fine, I'm going to have it.
Okay, probably, yeah, that's all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Put your mouth on this, we'll get here.
I saw this one.
Okay. Preliminary subdivision filing, 181 School Street, continued in accordance with MGL, Chapter 41, Section 81S. In the town of Groveland subdivision rules and regulations will hold a public meeting Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, which will begin at 7:00 PM, but it's really 8:05 or 7:00 at the Groveland Town Hall, 183 Main Street, Groveland, Mass. 01834. To hear an application of Minco Development Corp., 231 Sutton Street, Suite 1B, North Andover, Mass., requesting approval of a seven-lot preliminary subdivision plan labeled preliminary subdivision for the street named 181R School Street, Groveland.
Good evening, Will Schruder from the Moore and Cameron Group here on behalf of Minco Development. As we discussed last time, we're here for a seven-lot preliminary subdivision application. And we discussed this in depth last time we were here. Again, this is a preliminary plan just for discussions purposes. And we did have a couple waivers that I just wanted to kind of go over again. So the first waiver had to do with the site or, I'm sorry, the curbing. So by regulation, there's vertical granite curbing. We requested to reduce that to a different type of curbing, whether it's slope granite as well instead of vertical granite for two reasons. Cost, which will be kind of, from the developer, will be taken and obviously the housing prices will go up if the development costs more money. And then second, currently, vertical granite curbing is difficult to source at this time. The second is to reduce the K-value, and that has to do with the roadway design. I don't know if you guys want me to get in depth, but we basically are requesting a waiver to be in compliance with the ASHTO regulations, which is the standard for designing roadways, and just reducing that K-value, which has to do with the curvature of the road, the vertical curvature of the road. And the last waiver that we were requesting is the distance between streets is the reduction from the 400 required to 300. And the road would be designed, traffic impact assessment will be completed, traffic studies. And we did look at site distance and everything was compliant with the speed of the existing road out there. So at this time, you know, we're going to request that we get a positive determination, approve this application, but I would like to open it up for discussion, any questions.
This is still a preliminary plan.
Preliminary, correct, yep.
Not a definitive subdivision plan.
Correct.
I just want to clear that up for everybody.
Preliminary subdivision approval to move on to the next step, which would be a definitive subdivision.
Wally, comment?
Yeah, on, as I mentioned before, I think this plan was a perfect conceptual plan. It did not go out for engineering review, so we don't have our third-party engineer reviewing on this. I personally don't agree with any of those waivers.
Wally, real quick though, it's a, under a preliminary plan, we don't have to send it out for.
It actually says that, it is both, if you look at the way the, the reg is, but we could discuss that later. It's always been a board policy that the preliminary. It's always been a board policy that the preliminary does get sent out as well. However, that said, this plan is insufficient as a preliminary plan. And it, no, no need for the waivers on a brand-new subdivision. The cost of curbing to the contractor, developer, is of no consequence to the town, because we have to maintain this road once it's built and we want it to our standards. We did have a contractor years ago that went in and didn't want to build a sidewalk all the way around, and there was no benefit to the future residents of that. So that was denied as well. So really, cost shouldn't come into this. It should be meeting the regulation. If it meets the reg, it flies. This one is not up to that standard as it is filed.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I would agree with that comment on the curbing. We're going to discuss the other two as well, the K-value and the...
Yep, so you want to reduce the K-value?
Yes, correct. So we want to, the regulations are not the same as the ASHTO green book, which is the standard.
There are regulations, right?
What's, what's that?
Groveland bylaws.
Groveland bylaws do not match. So we want to reduce it and be in compliance with the state standard engineering practice of the ASHO, ASHTO. I mean, we can design it, there's no issue, we're just requesting a waiver to reduce that. So that basically takes a vertical curve and shortens the length of the vertical curve. If that makes sense, if you can picture that, it makes it a smaller vertical curve rather than extending it with a larger K-value.
Okay. And the third waiver?
Was the reduction for the distance between roadways from 400 feet is required by the regulations, and we want to reduce that to 300, which is in the general character of the streets, surrounding streets in this area.
Jason?
I don't have anything at this time on either of those two waivers.
I'm going to hold my discussion. I'm going to open this up for public comment right now.
Could I just make one more comment about the plan set itself? So this is a preliminary plan for discussion purposes, and we have met all the criteria and the regulations for these plans. And, I mean, they explicitly even say that it's for a general manner for discussion. So I know there was comments, which are well-received from, example, from the fire department, from the water department, electrical department, that we will be incorporating if we move forward with a definitive subdivision for the site. So just want to make sure.
We still going to, you know, when we get to the definitive plan, this is just, again...
I completely understand. This is for discussion purposes for the preliminary subdivision submittal, correct.
So, I mean, there's still a heavy weight on stormwater management, there's still a heavy weight on...
Completely, yep.
Site plan review?
Completely understand, this site has not been engineered fully. This is preliminary for discussion. And we will, if we move forward with a definitive, we fully comply with all the state regulations for stormwater management. It will be worked with the boards, other town departments, all their regulations will be met.
Okay. I would like to open it up for public comment.
By all means.
That's why they're here. John, are you going to speak?
I might as well. I believe I get notified, but is this the one by Whitestone?
Correct.
Okay.
I did get a notification on this, I hadn't seen the plan, but looking from here, it doesn't look like there's any place to put snow at the end. As far as, how many acres are they trying to stick this into?
Five, five something.
Because with Whitestone, they had to meet, yes, they got some waivers on street wits, turnarounds, things like that. But with that, they don't get trash pickup, they don't get any town services in the property. Are they going to also not get services if they get reductions in use?
That, it depends on if the developer, if they choose to build the road to our standards. But any road that gets accepted in town has to go to town meeting, and the residents at town meeting choose whether or not they want to accept the roadway. So that would be the ultimate determination of whether or not they would get services. Because any private road right now, they still have the right to petition town meeting to be accepted.
Okay. So all the, the lots are going to have either 150 or 200 feet of frontage in order to be legal lots? Is that, that's still the requirement, correct?
Still the requirement, yeah.
Okay, because looking from here, I don't see that.
Well, that's why they're pretty odd-shaped lots. To get, to get the frontage that they need, so...
Again, there's some of the stuff that I mentioned last time, though it meets it. 21-inch mower on a 19-inch space, I mean, you're encroaching.
It, it meets all the regulations for the zoning regulations.
I'm just asking, how do you mow another guy's property that's trespassing?
The, Brad, and I don't think that really complies with the intent of the bylaw, which was to eliminate the, the...
There is a legal definition. Okay.
Yeah, I think this entire plan violates the spirit and intent of the subdivision control law and the zoning bylaws, which is why I thought this would have been a good conceptual plan submittal versus jumping all the way to preliminary, not even having the site engineered, and missing quite a few things. Which would have, which would have go ahead and given the applicant a lot more accurate information if it was sent out for engineering review as well. But there, there is some major issues with this particular application.
Anybody else in the public? What's that? Same plan.
Okay.
I believe, right?
Correct.
Yeah, we're definitely doing the same thing, we kind of wasted a lot of time today. But, um, you know, that is my lot in the corner there, and the, you know, water that builds up there already. From the street, you're probably over eight feet, you know, the grade goes down there. And that's why he wants to make the pitch different, but that's going to put a lot of water in my backyard. It's pretty low back there. Standing water all down, you know, on a regular basis. So really concerned, everybody's concerned about this water issue. I have a well, it's 12 feet down, you know, you're eight feet down my, you know, the water table there, we're on top of the hill, but the water table, you know, I get, I get water in my basement. You know, so when they cut down all the trees beside there, I got more water in my basement. Where is it going, you know? More trees you're cutting down and, you know, there's no place for this water to go. It's not absorbing, you know, it's just not...
They'll have to, you know...
Just to, you know, just to say what I see all the time, you know, weather comes in, rain, you know, it's building up there with all those trees now, and trees obviously absorb a lot of that water. And you, like I said, the guy cut down all the trees next to my house, I got more water in my basement. You know what I mean? So, you know, that's all, it's a really concern. I know drainage and stuff like that, but the, the land doesn't absorb it, like, you know, you know, it's very high water table there, and it's, you know... And I think Groveland is, you look around and everybody has a nice lot. And everything's square, rectangle, you go to every neighborhood around that entire area, and somebody could put up a garage next to the house, you know, like, plenty of room, they can put a trampoline, they can have that kind of thing. And I think people move there because they like that about this place. And it was, every lot down beside that is, my lot, every lot is like a nice lot. And they're trying to like really squeeze this and make the money out of it. And, you know, we get the repercussions. So that's all I got to say, thank you.
Jeff Maniscalco, oh, sorry. Jeff Maniscalco, 6 Ann Street. I'm the third one down on Ann on the left. I, last meeting, I invited all of you to come walk my lot. You can see the drastic drop in grade from that lot to my lot. My backyard is a complete hill, it's probably 30 feet with a pretty steep incline. And that water is either coming to my yard or it's going towards Whitestone. So that plan needs to be addressed, please. And also a buffer, I think we talked about this last time, but a buffer, trees or something, some type of setback. I don't want to look, I don't want to be in the pool with my kids and have someone at their top window looking at me, you know? Because like I said, my, my, my lot's below that hill. Thank you.
Michelle Frost from Whitestone Village. I live in Building 6 in Whitestone Village. And on a nor, in a normal rainstorm, my yard is a swimming pool. It is absolutely saturated. And where this is going, it's a huge hill that it's going to be coming off of. And I can't imagine what it's going to be like.
Under our stormwater management regs, they can't move any water off their lots. Everything has to be contained in that subdivision. And they have to, whether with improved soils, you know, he hasn't come to us with a stormwater management plan yet. So again, this is the preliminary, this is just the start. When we get into a definitive, if they move, if they choose to move forward with this, there'll be way more engineering, it'll be much more involved. It's not going to be a two-meeting deal. It's probably going to be six, nine months' worth of back and forth.
We, we don't have a requirement for preliminary plans to include any more detail than this.
Yeah, no. And that's, I mean, it's...
If you look in our preliminary plan, section, um, Chapter 70, Section 3.3, Section B contents, it lays out the 23 requirements for the context of a preliminary plan. And that, John, I forgot to mention to you because you weren't here, the binder in front of you has our zoning bylaws, subdivision, stormwater, everything in it. So that's what that binder is in front of you.
The 20, the 23 requirements for a preliminary plan are, are in this plan? They're satisfied as a preliminary plan?
As a preliminary plan.
Okay.
Most engineers go a further step than the basics to give the board more detailed information available to the plan, because it, you just have to add it all in on a definitive. And that's been policy of the board for 30 years.
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, I would start at the conceptual, but...
Right, that's exactly correct.
Yeah, I totally understand the logic there, but I'm just want, like, is technically something missing from the preliminary? That's the, that's the issue. I think this approach, like, we might be fine, it's just going to make the definitive stage longer, because you're going to, you're going to go through multiple revisions there that you could have been going through now.
And engineering reviews, which is going to cost a lot. Also, make note that this plan appears to be, to be submitted as a max-density plan and not taken into account, as I mentioned before, the spirit and intent of the subdivision control law, the zoning bylaws, and of the quaint town of Groveland itself and its citizens. It, it's, it's obvious what this plan is about, and it just doesn't meet any of those.
I tend to agree with you, Wally. So as a board, what do you want to do? We have to vote tonight?
I'd like to make a motion, yeah, go ahead, if somebody else started one, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying we have to vote tonight, I think his application runs out tomorrow.
Yep, so if you look in your meeting packet, in the, your packet within a packet of the, um, application for this, the applicant chose to extend only until tomorrow, unless the applicant tonight will, I don't know if you want to further extend or if you want the board to make a decision tonight.
We, we would like you guys to make a decision tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to deny this preliminary subdivision plan with the included into the points that we've already mentioned in this meeting and the previous meeting.
Okay. So motions?
I didn't, can you repeat that, Wally? I didn't hear all of it.
Yeah, it's a motion to deny the preliminary application for this address, for this plan, based upon the input from the citizens, the board, and the regulations and spirit thereof of Town of Groveland.
So motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, vote in favor?
In favor of the denial?
In favor of the denial of the preliminary plan in front of us.
So yea means you deny, nay means you don't deny.
I would just say, state your name. State your name and either deny or accept. How was that? John?
I, Walt Sarnson, deny the plan.
John Stokes, aye.
Deny, okay, sorry.
Jason Aves, deny.
Brad Legals, deny.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. You're welcome.
I have a question. Can this be refiled?
Absolutely.
Just because the preliminary plan was denied doesn't mean a definitive. They could defi, file for definitive plan, which would mean if it gets approved, it would happen. Basically.
And then with the definitive plan, just so you know, there's a lot more engine, lot more detail, lot more engineering, lot more back and forth between the two parties and us. And it's, it's usually the way we see them. It's still, what they did is mass-compliant. Oh, yeah, there'll be a re-notiff, yep.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. Okay, we go 142 King Street, discussion of as-built and bond release. John, stay. We haven't seen you in a while. Me too.
Calm down, I don't know, bring some coffee for everybody, it's a good time.
Start serving coffee and donuts?
I hear a lot of people like candy here at Town Hall.
Oh, we do have some candy bandits in Town Hall, I will say.
Okay. Sir?
So my name's Matt Connors, I own 142 King Street. I was here a few months ago. The driveway's installed, road control is installed, the drainage is installed. And I submitted the plan to you. At that time, you had wanted a outside review, which turns out to be about $1,600, which is on the extortion side. This is my industry, I'm a civil engineer too. It's probably like $400 worth of work at the end of the day. So is there a way around having an outside review? Because I'm getting feed to death and in, construction costs are out of control. So what?
I feel your pain, I develop, I feel, I pay it. So I, I, you know...
It's, it's per plan, I'm more than happy if you guys want to come down and walk it with me. It's, you know, is there...
Well, an as-built is always done by a peer-review engineer in this town.
Well, that's an as-built. So an as-built is always reviewed by a, a, outside engineer? For, I mean, it's a driveway, what are we, what are we reviewing?
On this, it's a subdivision.
It's a driveway.
In your eyes, it's a driveway, but it's still an approved subdivision plan.
I understand that.
It was split off.
I, no, I know, I know the whole history.
So...
But it's a driveway at the end of the day.
A driveway with stormwater management.
Right.
I'm not an engineer.
Okay. I mean, what?
I'd like to differ on that with Mr. Chair. This was, this was designed as a single-lot subdivision by the previous landowners.
Correct.
Because they didn't have the clearances necessary, the frontage and the adequate access to get up to that lot the way they wanted to do it. So they went through the subdivision control process, it's approved as a single-lot subdivision, and all the criteria for a single-lot subdivision apply. It may look like a driveway to the average person, but it's really not. It's a right-of-way up into the property. And if you weren't aware of the requirements in the approval of the decision that it was a single-lot subdivision, then you might have a different direction to go in. But this is pretty clear, and it's required. And as I've mentioned several times this evening, if it meets the reg, it flew there. This went through the process and you have requirements necessary. I know that expenses on everything is up.
So nowhere in the decision says, does it say that it's supposed to go to an outside review?
As-built plans... As-built plans, and all plans do. That has been policy of the board since that was enacted, I think in 95. They just do. They go out and through and do it. If you want to help them out, but that's the way the process has to go on it. And it should have been written, were you aware of those requirements when you purchased the land?
There is, there is nowhere in the decision that states an outside review has to be performed for the as-built.
That's, that's the policy of the board, but the other requirements are there. I mean, everything should be in there. You should have been aware as an engineer. This was a single-lot subdivision, and all those rules comply.
I'm aware it's a single-lot subdivision. Your eye, it was, you know, in other towns, it would have been a reduced lots frontage. You decided to do a private driveway for one lot, which is, I'm not going to argue that.
It was, it was an interesting process too, but you weren't, unfortunately, I'm sure you would have done a different, different application maybe, but that's what came before the board, and that's what was approved, and the decisions came.
I'm not arguing what was approved. I'm just stating, it's, this is like, engineers don't want to do this type of review stuff, so they sit there and they load up the fees. I know this from personal experience. I get asked to do reviews all the time. We load up the fees, so you'll go away.
Well, that doesn't sound like good business practice, but that's not what we do in the town of Groveland.
Epic way of doing business, isn't it?
If you have, if you have a boatload of projects out there, and you basically are trying to make people go someplace else, you load the fees up. When you have a review that's $1,600 for a guy to drive a half an hour from his office, he's over in Lawrence, I know Peter, he's going to come here, he can stop and get a Dunkin' Donuts on the way, walk the site if he decides to get out of his car, that's going to take a half an hour, turn around, go back, there's an hour and a half. Now, you're going to say, okay, I'll write a letter, there's another hour. So, he's talking about two days' worth of work in his fee versus a half a day's worth of actual.
I don't make his fee schedules. I know I make my fee schedules when I do something. So, I mean, I can't be, I can't waive the fees, and I can't...
I'm not asking you to waive the fee. I'm trying to, is there a way that we can do this without having an outside engineer?
We...
I have over $40,000 in fees on this project.
We, if I set the precedence for you, then everybody behind you is going to do the same.
For basically a single, single lot with a driveway?
Yes.
And actually, Peter knows that, has been reviewing this property, so actually, it goes, it's pretty streamlined, since he's already got a lot of work knowledge on this particular project.
I understand it. He's in it from the start.
Right, right. So, it makes it easier.
Why is it so much money?
I don't think that's much money at all, actually. We hold on regular subdivisions 10 grand. So, so, I mean, whatever that fee is, but if you want to move forward, that's what we've got to do, and that's what the town requires. And I'm sure everybody's fees have gone up with this economy and everything else that's going on right now. But I do not condone an engineer jacking fees up because they want someone to go away. I've never even heard of that practice myself. I've been in construction 50 years, and we certainly don't do that, and the town doesn't do that. So, I just want to correct the record on that. If other firms are doing it, well, they have to look themselves in the mirror. But we don't do that at the Town of Groveland.
Yeah, it's the one we found in Pheasant Lane.
Yeah, I think you were.
Nope. I bought this, I bought this last January, and so, all right, fine. Annie, can you get this going so we can get this wrapped up?
Yeah, I can. I'll email you tomorrow with the information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, General.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Meeting minutes, approval of March 21st, 2023, and April 4th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second?
Good night, Dan.
Roll call, vote. Good night, John.
Aye, Walt Sarnson.
Brad Legals, aye.
Jason Aves, aye.
Okay. Next up, plan, town planner update.
This meeting was basically it. Things have been pretty busy. I had a application with the zoning board come in for a special use permit. I sent it off to the chair for review. That's the first Wednesday in May. Other than that, that's about it. I mean, these hearings that we have going on tonight, it kind of just all ended up compiling rather than being on-off weeks, but this is kind of what I've been focusing on as of late. I will say, as a, just a reminder to the board, town meeting is next Monday. It's a big town meeting, not just because of things that we have going on as a board, but I'm sure as you are all more than aware, the town is looking for an override, and that is on the budget this year. We also have some projects going on through the CPC. We, as the department, not necessarily planning board through the Community Preservation Fund, you know, looking at pickleball and tennis ball, in tennis courts down at the pines, a skate park. So, yeah, anyway, that's just my plug for town meeting, because I have to.
What time is it Monday night?
It is at 7:00 on Monday at the Bagnell School. Yep, that's that. And then, other than that, that's all I got for this evening.
All right. Other items not reasonably anticipated at this time or posting? Nothing?
No, nothing came in.
A motion to adjourn.
So, motion.
Okay. Roll call, vote. Wally first.
Aye, Walt Sarnson.
John?
John Stokes, aye.
Jason?
Jason Aves, aye.
Brad Legals, aye. Good night, Town of Groveland.
Night all.